It looks like Karen's over in the participants, that's our Karen. Where the attendees, I mean.
Yes, thank you, I just moved her.
You may need to go a little.
You already are.
Thank you, sir. Our Karen.
Hello, everybody. How are you, Karen? I could be better, but I, I'm here. So, okay. Um, I don't know, we'll find out about the results of the tests and then I'll tell you. Okay. Oh goodness, we'll take a lot of water. That's what I'm doing. Any other recommendations from those on council that have gone through this stuff? Rainie, you're on mute. She could use a different.
Karen, do you think you've got COVID?
Well, something's not right. We, we both went and got tested this morning, so we'll find out, so, you know. Had a really bad headache for like three days and the head and the heavy weight on my chest and no fever, uh, or not much, but I'm just wondering. So.
Do you think it could be maybe smoke related too?
I'm hoping it's allergies and smoke, that's what I'm hoping, you know, so, but.
Well, I don't, I mean, I just kind of water and sleep and tea and that's all. I took some Tylenol, well, I had a fever though, but I took Tylenol.
Well, I'm hoping it's just allergies, I've doubled up on stats, but that's, you know, about all I knew. What about you, Rainie, any suggestions?
Absolutely, take very little doses of zinc, vitamin C and vitamin D. Very high amounts of it, I don't know. I still take like five pills a day of vitamin D.
Wow. Oh, good to know, vitamin D, vitamin C and zinc.
Right, very high. Hey, do you all want to hear something very sweet?
Yes.
I love you guys.
That is very quick.
Is that from your granddaughter?
That is.
Wow, that's wonderful.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
About a minute and a half out.
Okay, minute and a half out, folks.
Karen, I don't know if this makes a difference, but when, when I had it, I just whined. W I N E D. No, not H I N E D. Okay. I'm not real patient. Maybe that's where I am.
You're offline, Karen, I'll tell you more about my experience.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thirty seconds?
Okay, three seconds.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the virtual regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council in Lakewood, Colorado at seven PM this evening. Uh, I will make note that Counselor Frank's machine crashed just as she was logging in, so she will be with us momentarily. And with that, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Bida.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen. All right, we know about Frank's, uh, Johnson.
I am here.
Labour.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
All right, and let the record note that Counselor Frank showed up just after roll call, so, welcome. We'll also let the record reflect that Counselor Springsteen is with us as well. So, I want to, uh, again, welcome everybody, and before we get into the pledge, I want to put the phone number out to participate this evening, which is one, two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two. Webinar ID nine, two, four, five, two, nine, four, three, nine, five, eight. And you'll press pound, press pound once again to, uh, get into the meeting. You'll press star nine to request to speak and star six to unmute. So I'd encourage you, we have a couple opportunities for, uh, public comment tonight. I'd encourage you, uh, to please press star nine right now, uh, that way we'd make sure that we see that you're gonna wanna speak. Again, press star nine and we can figure out when you're called upon which, uh, section you're looking to weigh in. If you do happen to have any issues weighing in or trying to get through, please email me, apaul, P A U L, at Lakewood dot org, and we'll try to work that out. So again, if you are on the line and you wish to speak under, uh, any of the commenting areas tonight, feel free to raise your hand right now, star nine, so that we ensure that you have the opportunity. I'd also like to flag for those folks that are interested in, um, item ten, which is ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-one dash twenty, uh, twenty-four, there will be a motion to postpone that ordinance and the chair of that committee will explain, and certainly council will have their opportunity to weigh in, but there's, there's a few different things, a few different moving parts. So, again, I wanna make sure the community knows that going into the meeting. And with that, will you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance or remain up for a moment of silent prayer? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. Okay, next up, moving along, is, uh, general public comment. And I'll note that there were no comments left on Lakewood Speaks under general public comment. This is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council. I ask that all persons calling in observe the same decorum of a city council meeting held in person in council chambers. Uh, the clerk will call your name or the last four, um, last four digits of your phone number. Once you are brought into the meeting, please give us your name for the record, as well as your address or ward. I'll start your three minutes, when you're at thirty seconds, you will hear and then when your time is up, I will, uh, do that again a couple times. So again, this is general public comment, Mr. Clerk, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, first, we're gonna call on Lenore Herskowitz. We've been in contact, uh, and she's having a little bit of trouble, so she should be able to talk now.
Great. Good evening, I see that you are in, and when you're ready to go, please start.
Okay, uh, this is just to update you on the CCU lawsuit. Students have now moved into both sides of a duplex that's part of the legal dispute. At least one member of council has pointed out to City Hall that the duplexes in question have never been used to house CCU students during the school year. This current practice does not represent the status quo and is a violation of the temporary restraining order. So I wanna know now what will the city do? Two weeks ago, both Robert Baker, who was representing the Mid Lakewood Civic Association, and myself, raised our concerns and questions about how the city is handling this lawsuit. To date, no one from councilor's staff has initiated any response to either of us. Ignoring us will not make us go away or disappear. Enforce this T R O, which you chose not to oppose, and tell CCU they must comply with the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next and again, for folks tuning in, this is general public comment. So if you wish to speak, please raise your hand, which is, uh, star nine. Mr. Clerk.
Suzie Dude.
Okay. This dude, if you give us your, uh, we have, it's like we have your name, your address or ward, we'll start your three minutes.
Um, I'm Ward one.
Okay.
And I am calling in once again to call on city council to take steps to ensure that, um, Lakewood, um, Police Department is, has accountability standards and that, um, there is a system to uphold accountability for Lakewood Police and when they are in violation, or when they, um, are involved in misconduct, that, um, a proper investigation is conducted and that there is a citizen review board involved in the oversight of Lakewood Police. I do not want my daughter, my two-year-old daughter, growing up in a city that, um, does not hold their police accountable and that police can, um, abuse people and engage in misconduct, um, and not be held to account. Um, I also just want to hope that I hear from more of Lakewood City Council members. Um, thus far, Anita Springsteen has been the sole city council member who has shown any interest in, um, in looking at this issue and taking it seriously. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Let me get back to my clock here. Go ahead.
Uh, John Claus.
Hey, Mr. Claus. Give us, it's like we have your name, please give us your ward or address for the record.
Good evening, council, my name's John Claus, I live in Ward one. I am once again calling to ask council member Abel to comment on his ongoing romantic relationship with city council candidate Kathy Kettner and declaring conflict of interest opposes. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Clerk.
We have Joshua Comden.
All right, good evening, Mr. Comden, if you give us your name and address or ward, actually, we have your name, sorry. Address or ward, please go ahead.
All right, my, my name is Joshua Comden, I'm in Ward one. I'm calling again to talk about, um, getting a citizen review board for Lakewood Police Department. I think it would be really helpful, especially in situations like Amir Allen's situation. And, uh, it could be structured like the, uh, Lakewood Advisory Commission. Uh, they do a very good job in what they do, and I think we could continue this very good job in a similar structure type thing. And I would like also to say that, um, Anita Springsteen had a very nice, um, interview yesterday with Cut the Plastic, and I really appreciated that, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else for general public comment? Please raise your hand, which is gonna be star nine.
Okay, we have Spencer Wilcox.
All right, Mr. Wilcox, uh, if you give us your ward or address, we'll get you started.
Hi, I'm Spencer and I go to school in Ward one. And in regard to last week's city council workshop, I would like to thank counselors Labour, counselor Skilling and Mayor Paul, uh, for keeping Counselor Anita Springsteen in check with her conspiracy theories. Conspiracy theories are dangerous, and if unchecked, uh, it will lead to severe deterioration of this council. And I urge you and other members to keep holding her accountable and call out her mistruths. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else wish to speak under general public comment, star nine? Will raise your hand. Okay, again, star nine for general public comment. It's general public comment. Okay, I will go ahead and close general public comment and turn it over to Ms. Hodson. Do you have a report this evening?
I do, thank you, good evening. Um, a couple of items to report, first of all, um, what you've all been waiting for, I'm sure of it, is the twenty twenty-two budget book. And you will have that in hard copy on September third. Um, it will be available online a little bit earlier in the week. Um, this is the result, the budget book is the result of a lot of, uh, people working really hard to put this information together, including every single department, as well as our own budget audit board. So thanks in advance to the folks who have put this together. And I think you'll notice a few changes in the book, we've tried to make it a little more efficient, um, and easier to read. So, how's that for a cliffhanger? So that's something you can look forward to on September third. You, you each will get your own physical hard copy of the budget book. Um, you know, I think it's important to note that we've had some significant hiring challenges all throughout the city. And I thought I'd give, just as an example, um, the, the different positions that we have open in a single department. So right now, these are the positions that we have open in Public Works, just to give you an example of how tough it's been to hire our folks. We have a building inspector position open, a main desk receptionist, a senior building plans examiner, a contractor registration, a position, two stormwater maintenance workers positions, three street cleaning maintenance workers who also drive a snowplow during the snowy days. And, and one construction inspector position available. So that just gives you a sense, and that's just one department. Every department has a list and is working diligently with our human resources, trying to find new ways to advertise and to recruit for, um, employees. So if you have anyone, if you know of somebody who's looking for a job and would like to do municipal work, please send them our way. Okay, so this evening at five o'clock, closed the, um, all of the petitions and additional paperwork was due for all of our new council candidates. The submittals were all due today at five o'clock. And on September twenty-seventh will be the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. That's this year, it's September twenty-seventh. I think all of you have experienced these, this forum. Um, again, this year it'll be moderated by Mark Kobrick, who does a really nice job, um, asking questions and really interacting with the council candidates. Additionally, every year, um, every election year, we have a council candidate meeting where we give a lot of general information, how to interact with the city, how to access our um, response system, et cetera. That'll be held on August thirty-first. I believe that's at, uh, five-thirty in the evening, but of course that'll be posted and all of the candidates will be notified of this meeting. This meeting includes the drawings for ballot placement as well. So again, that's August thirty-first. Um, and finally, you've probably heard a lot of information about potential new mandates for vaccinations and mask, mask mandates. We haven't heard yet from our county health department. Um, but we're expecting the department to issue new guidance soon, sometime in September. Um, so as soon as that information comes out, we'll share that with you and let you know how that, um, impacts our employees, citizens, et cetera, in Lakewood. So that concludes my report, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hodson. So, moving along, we'll move to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent, the use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action, it contains both resolutions and first reading ordinances. Resolutions are items of a routine nature. Members of the public will have an opportunity in a moment to comment on any of the proposed resolutions. First reading ordinances. Seeing if we have one. Here, on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of a proposed ordinance. No public comments will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have an opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the date set tonight by city council. If anybody, um, I'll open the public hearing now on the consent agenda. If anybody wishes to speak on the consent agenda, it looks like just resolution number twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, please raise your hand with star nine. And this is the consent agenda, star nine for item, uh, twenty twenty-one dash forty-two. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on the consent.
We have.
Mayor.
Sorry, one popped up and went away, mayor, my apologies. Oh wait, I still see. Liz Brewer, we do have someone.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, Liz Brewer.
Okay, Ms. Brewer, give us your address or ward, we'll get you started on the, uh, consent agenda.
Good evening, thank you, I'm wondering if I'm doing it this correct time though, so please correct me. I was going to make comment on the short-term rentals. Is that due at a different time?
It is due at a different time.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And, and just, you may not have been on when I mentioned it earlier, there may be a postponement of that.
Okay.
So just wanna throw that out as well, okay?
Very fine, thank you so much, I'm sorry.
You're fine, thank you. Anybody else on the consent agenda? Mayor Protem, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of city council minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record, although I'm not sure the city clerk introduced those items.
Well, thank you, I did not have those right into the record. This is a good catch from Mayor Protem, uh, Mr. Rem, could you go ahead and read the, into the record? Thank you.
Item six is resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, authorizing the assignment to the Lakewood Housing Authority, DBA Metro West Housing Solutions of the City of Lakewood's twenty twenty-one private activity bond volume cap allocation pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bonds Ceiling Allocation Act. And then item seven is approving the minutes of city council meetings, and item eight is accepting minutes of the boards and commissions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, thank you, nice catch.
Do you want me to just reread it and then?
Please.
Mayor Paul, I move for the approval of the city council minutes, acceptance of the minutes of the boards and commissions, and for adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record, very finely, by the city clerk.
Second.
All right, motion is second on the consent agenda. Any comments, council? All right, seeing none, please cast your votes. That passes, uh, ten ayes and zero nays, thank you. So we'll do this right this next time, I'll now open the whole of the public hearing on item nine and ask the clerk to please read that into the record.
Yes, this is ordinance oh dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, approving a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty-one annual budget in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for peace officer, mental health support, and authorizing expenditure thereof.
Thank you, I'll now open the public hearing portion of this for ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. If you wish to speak, please press star nine. Okay, star nine, if you wish to speak. Okay, I'll close public comment on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, ask for a motion.
I move for the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three on second and final reading.
Second.
Motion is second, any questions or discussion? All right, Counselor Springsteen.
I am very much in support of this. I think that we need a lot more efforts like this to support our police force. Um, things have changed a great deal for them, qualified immunity has gone away. They have a lot more stresses that we can't even imagine. And I think that we need to support our police force by talking about issues like mental health that needs to be dealt with. So I'm very much in support of this, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Great, please cast your votes. That passes ten ayes and zero nays. Okay. Moving on to item ten, I'm gonna turn this over to Counselor Vincent, who is the chair of the Housing Policy Committee.
Yes, um, I, there's been a lot of information out there, we've gotten a lot of feedback, there's been a lot of amendments, and we've also, uh, reviewed the ordinance. So, there seems to be with that, um, as head of the policy co- uh, committee, and after further review and much feedback, I move to table item ten, ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, short-term rentals, for the purpose of directing staff to revise such ordinance regarding the following issues. One, incorporating amendments submitted by the city council. And two, inserting any missing information on taxing and licensing that may have been omitted. And three, development of a second pol- ordinance, I'm sorry, modifying table seventeen dash four dash, or seventeen dot four dot one of the zoning code to incorporate the S T R use. And further direct the city manager to put this back on the agenda when the issues here have been addressed.
Great, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and, and there's, there's a couple of hands up, and, and certainly I'll, I'll get through and you know, it became apparent, not only over the weekend, but for some time leading up, that there are a few more components to this. but for some time leading up, that there are a few more components to this piece. And this has to do more with the licensure, but there is zoning, there is taxation, there's a hotel lodger's tax. And so a lot of things came to fruition. There's been amendments that have been proposed that the community haven't really had a chance to weigh in or see, as well as some council members that want to continue conversation about what would this look like if it went to an election. So there's, there's a lot more to this, and I know folks are super interested. We had 21 comments online, and I certainly thank the community for continuing to weigh in. But that's how we got to this point, is to really try to continue to engage, take everything into consideration, especially some of these different issues that were raised tonight in the chair's motion. So with that, council comments or questions? Counselor Abel.
Thank you, mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with what you just said. There are no fewer than 17 changes, most of them significant changes, offered by council. And I don't think many members of our community have had access to what those changes might be. And since they are so significant, I wholeheartedly agree that we should postpone this until we can do, we can put it all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I also agree. I would also like to say that I hope that we can put a date certain on this because this has been actually out there for, for months and months. And in the meantime, more of them become active in our community. And so we need to get it addressed as soon as possible. Do you have any idea when, when this will come about? Kathy, do you have any idea how long it'll take staff?
So at this point, counselor, it would go back to the housing committee, and we certainly would have to figure out when that committee could meet and bring in all the different folks, including our city attorney. And so I would imagine, you know, it's not probably going to be a quick turnaround, especially considering our schedule. But at least the committee meeting, we should be able to get scheduled.
And also, I would like to say that there should be a counter ordinance that says that they are not going to be permitted, so that there are actually two ordinances. One that talks about different rules, and one to say that, no, we're not going to allow them to have an up or down vote on that as well. Thank you.
Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I wanted to maybe inquire, when it goes back to the Housing Policy Commission. Basically, I, maybe my notes weren't clear. I took down that obviously all the offered amendments would go forth. The change to the zoning table. Make, want to make sure I get all of those down, but I'm trying to understand what the Housing Policy Commission's actions would be.
Thank you for that. And Chair Vincent, if you want to weigh in, or I'm certainly happy to, but it's your committee.
Yes, I think it would be preferable if we could address those things exactly that we're supposed to address, because obviously the zoning would have to go to staff. And there's also some amendments, I think, that would have to go to staff, too. The way I see it is, is a review after some of that is there to make sure those things are incorporated. But mayor, you might have some more additional information as well as some thoughts on it, too.
And, and Counselor Franks did a, a, a great job kind of getting a lot of this information to, to this stage as a former, as a former chair, and then Counselor Vincent has carried that and done a great job as well. But I, I think it would work in the same way that this, this group has, has worked before, but also allow the community to see everything that's in play and to bring back those recommendations with what we've heard tonight, along with those amendments and what was listed in the motion through our legal to bring back for consideration. And, and certainly would merit the vote of all of council, not just, you know, like the other committees will do as well, where everything's carried forward, but with recommendations based upon what those are.
So if I understand, Mayor Protem, Skilling and I presented quite a number of amendments. So I'd be taking my own amendments back to the housing law. Just trying to understand this. If you all don't agree, I'm still bringing them back as amendments. So it just, it seems to me that if we wanted to get this addressed sooner, but again, I'm happy to go with what our chair has, has decided. It just, I was trying to understand, you know, if there were true things for us to ferret out, or whether we were going to just continue to all bring our amendments forward. So I will defer.
And, and I would echo what you said. There's a lot of folks who want to see amendments, and those will still go forward. But it gives the community time to weigh in. It gives a, a more of a complete version of the ordinance. Right now, it's kind of Frankensteined if we were to try to, to do this tonight. And, you know, potentially what I, what I learned and what you see in other kind of bodies, particularly the state house, they number the amendments. And so that's also a, a way to look at, so people can reference those via a number or something along those lines.
Thank you. I didn't disagree. I don't believe tonight's the right night, but was just trying to understand the, the, the process piece on that for the community. Make sure they're real clear. So you will get an opportunity to have public discussion at the Housing Policy Commission, and then you'll certainly be able to then have a future discussion on, then it, would it be mayor, a first and second reading, or just back to a second reading?
That's a great question for clarification, because we are on second reading, but it's potentially could change a lot. So I'll refer to Ms. McKinney Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I would recommend that this come back for first and second reading. I, I do anticipate that even if we just incorporated the changes that came from city council in the last three days, that will make such a different document, and it, and it really does deserve to be posted to the public.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hudson?
I would also like to recommend, if, if you're agreeable, that at your next HPC meeting, that you have a member of the city attorney's office present. So as you're looking through those amendments, she or her designee can help write that up and make sure that we're in compliance with state law as well. So it's just a thought if, if you're willing.
Absolutely, Ms. Hudson. That was part, the zoning component needs to have that, that kind of input as well, because again, we're, what's before us tonight is licensing, but there's a zoning component. And that's not to say, again, for folks, some folks certainly are against this period, right? So there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different views that, that need to, to come through, so. Anything else?
That, that's all that I have, and I thank everybody for their input and the questions, because it's important that we do get somebody, I think, from legal there to try to, to solidify or to close some of those gaps that are out there. So, thank you.
So again, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the postponement of ordinance 0-2021-24. No other questions or comments. Please cast your votes. That passes 10 ayes and zero nays. And Counselor Johnson, I knew you were still voting yes, even though your no arrow was up. We got it. Okay. All right, so I'll just reiterate to the community on that. This will be a continued conversation with ample opportunity, posted opportunity to weigh in. And certainly we'll try to get a document out that has all the proposed changes. And the meeting for the Housing Policy Committee will be posted. And then there'll be another round of first and second reading opportunities as well. So please hang with us, but I think it's important to continue this way. Right, anything under general business? Seeing none, we'll go to council reports, and we'll just go 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. So Counselor Harrison.
No report.
Okay. Mayor Protem, Skilling, Counselor Franks?
No report.
No report.
We're three?
Yes, just quickly, just to remind everyone, we have our normal, regularly scheduled ward meeting this Saturday, nine o'clock, virtual, virtual meeting.
That's all. Thank you.
I would just add that I would encourage the public to object to persistent language and policy that is discriminating and demeaning toward women on this council, as has occurred almost weekly, especially in recent weeks. We have lost a woman on our council who has resigned, and it's interesting that nobody has even talked about it. Very concerning. Thanks.
Ward two?
Yes, we will not be having our ward two meeting the second Wednesday of the month. We have redone that for September 21st, and that will be at Forty West Arts, and it should be in the theater. We're, we're going to have it in theater, and it'll be the ward two counselors, questions and answers. And I'd like to thank both of those candidates for being very flexible. It's gone back and forth quite a bit. So that's all I have. I don't know if my co-partner there does or not. Okay.
All right, word one?
Are you going to go, Charlie?
I, I will. This weekend, I was at one of our local parks, and by chance encountered a person who has called us with concerns at a number of meetings. And because she hasn't received any sort of response, she felt like she wasn't being heard, that we weren't listening. I would like to assure her that we are listening and that we do discuss what we hear in public comment. However, we're not supposed to respond from the dais, as it were, even the virtual dais, because it's too easy for us to have a last, a last comment that might not be appropriate. So I would hope that staff will be following through on the concerns that people voice. And I would like for that frequent caller to know that we do listen. And while we might not always agree with each other or with our speakers, we do listen and we consider things very heavily. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Are you done, Charlie? I would just like to say this is a, a personal time of reflection in that we live in very uncertain times. Things are very different for all of us right now. The world circumstances, and nothing is certain anymore for anybody. I don't know how all of you and how the public goes for, for solace and goes for peace and calm, how you approach that. However, I would like to suggest for all of us that no time in history has our country needed our prayers more than now. And I hope that we will all be lifting our country in prayer together for peace and unity. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of quick announcements. I'd like to give a shout out to a team member here at the City of Lakewood. Angie Guerrero received an outstanding volunteer achievement award from the Colorado Emergency Management Association. She's in Community Resources, and that's a, a cool program that she's really jumped into and received a great award today, and had some family come here and, and her friends help her accept that. So that's fantastic. Certainly, you know, want to echo Counselor Abel's comments. We, we certainly do listen, and while we don't always respond in this manner, it's also more challenging when there are lawsuits involved, and, and being able to comment on pending litigation can be a challenge. So we certainly do hear and, and do take to heart the comments that come through. So I want to acknowledge that. I want to thank our clerk, who I think's had a busy few days and a few weeks leading up to today, and, and Ms. Hudson mentioned the closing of kind of candidate forums, and this starts a whole new time period for elections. So I encourage the community to get engaged and find out who's running. Their census information, and, and I'm hoping to reach out to the Census Bureau and see if they can get us more Lakewood-specific information, and if there's an opportunity to kind of break down some of those numbers. But you can go on their website right now. I think you can look at the City of Lakewood. We were about at 155,000 on April 20th. Saw about a 10% growth, I think, if I remember my numbers right, from a decade ago, which was well below a lot of our neighbors in the metro area. I'd also like to echo to the folks who called in regarding police. We take every matter very seriously. We have an incredibly professional team, an independent group that investigates from within, and they take great pride in that, and certainly want to make sure that they are always doing the right thing. And if they're not, they learn from that opportunity. So I'm very pleased with them. I've done some research on independent review committees and talked to a, a group out of New York City that handle it for the New York City Police Department of 33,000 police officers. And certainly learned that this isn't something you go into willy-nilly or knee-jerk. They were very excited and pleased when I told them and talked to them about the requirements and how we operate in the City of Lakewood. So that's certainly not lost on anybody at this dais, and it's important to reach out and better understand how these things work. And certainly have not had the chance to publicly acknowledge Counselor Gutwine for her service to the community. We haven't had a regular meeting. I'd be remiss if I said it's probably not prudent for other council members to speculate or hijack this resignation for their own efforts. If you want to better understand why Counselor Gutwine resigned, I'd encourage you to reach out to her. She did leave a note saying that COVID was very challenging on her and her family, and family is the most important thing, and I think we can all understand that. So with that, appreciate everybody's participation tonight. We have a couple of weeks off, so I hope you enjoy that downtime and can maybe go and enjoy your family in the community. Oh, and I'm sorry, I would be remiss to, our Parks Department is a great area of pride for us. And, and I know the community's reached out and have had some concerns. And if you saw their posting recently on social media, they understand they are shorthanded. They're trying their very hardest to make sure that our parks are up to the standards that, that we've all become accustomed to. But let's give them a break. Let's try to help where we can. We know that some areas, the weeds are very tall. And again, we're behind on, on many things, but they're trying really hard. They're being super proactive, and they, they have heard loud and clear the community's expectations, and they continue to strive to, to meet those. So thank you, everyone, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. We'll adjourn at 7:40 PM. Thank you.